Good evening and welcome to this Macomb Township Planning Commission. Today is May the 4th. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm operating as Chair this evening because our Chair Michael Hardy is absent and excused. And I appreciate that everyone has made it here today. Time is 6:30 and the first item on our agenda tonight is called Boarder, which I've done, and the second is the Pledge of Allegiance. You can rise if you need to.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three is the roll call. Mr. Bentley and Todd Roll.
Yes. Mr. Hardy is absent, excused. Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano.
Here.
Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Spatafor.
I'm present from the Macomb Township offices, Macomb Township, Macomb County, Michigan.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, you're here.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to exclude member Hardy from any and all roll call votes?
Uh, just one second, Mr. Shudo, to our legal counsel, just to verify, I know Mr. Spatafor was good enough to follow the instructions we've been given. Not all of us did. Are we okay?
Now, now that-
If something's wrong here?
Yeah, now that everybody is appearing live, you just have to announce whether you're present or not.
Okay.
But we do-
And Mr. Spatafor, I'm not calling out, just wanted to make sure we didn't have to redo it.
Correct.
Very good. With that being said, Mr. Shudo, I believe you had a motion to, Mr. Hardy, for any roll call votes.
Right.
Supported by Mr. Provenzano. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and I was going to mention that, but I'll mention that now as brief housekeeping. Because we're all present tonight, I'm going to call all votes as voice votes unless requested otherwise, or in case I hear an objection on the vote, I'll recall the vote as a roll call vote. With that being said, we're going to move on to item four, which is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. That will be for April the 20th. Is there any discussion or motions on this item?
If there's no discussion, I'll make the motion we approved the minute it says presented.
Motion by Mr. Shudo is starting support.
Oh, for.
Support by Mr. Bentley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That moves us on to item five, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion or motions on the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, just open the discussions for often petitions, corrections, and deletions. They move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Spatafor, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and the agenda for this evening is approved. That takes us on to item six, which is new business. Under new business, we have two items, so we're going to take them automatically here, starting with item eight, which is a request for approval of the site plan for Wellington Estates Site condo for temporary sales trailer. This is for permanent parcel 0816100024 and TRE Development LLC as the petitioner. Mr. Box, could you take us through the review on this, please?
Yes. I am going to share my screen here. So, this first item under new business, Wellington Estates, as you mentioned, they're looking for an approval for a temporary sales trailer. This is in the area of South 24, in the area across from the existing Town Center South development. Again, they're looking for an approval of their site plan for a temporary sales trailer, roughly 16 by 53 feet, located on units one through three of the previous site plan for Wellington Estates. So again, it's about 850 square feet. What were units one through three on their previously approved site plan? They were required some parking spaces as well as ADA compliant ramping. And they were not allowed to have lighting. As we went through the reviews, they checked all the boxes. Trailer is not located in a clear vision triangle, no residential structures within 75 feet. It's not within 15 feet of the site boundaries for the sites one through three, and they will not be connected to public water or sewer. There were a few other comments, and after speaking with other departments, those are things that can be confirmed after this evening. So at this time, the planning staff would recommend approval contingent on those items, which are that the trailer will be set back at least 20 feet from the nearest hydrant. The hydrant is shown on the plan, and it appears to be clearly more than 20 feet away. It's just not dimensioned, so we just wanted to make sure that that was confirmed, as well as they do need to turn in a paving and grading plan for the parking spaces before they can install it. And water and sewer wanted to make sure that the stop boxes and fire hydrants are protected during this process.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Did you want us to make that a part of the motion, and whoever makes a motion on this, if we decide to vote in front of it?
Contingent on those items, yes.
Okay. I think, and maybe we'll just say contingent on the items, um, due by Mr. Box to avoid confusion. One other procedural question I have before we go on. Typically, we see site plans in commercial locations. Obviously, this is residential. Since this is a site plan, is this an approval or a recommendation?
I believe this is an approval this evening.
The definitive on site plan.
I believe on site plans generally, it's considered approval. I just typically, typically with residential, we don't see a site plan, so.
Yeah, yeah, this is an approval.
Okay, very good. That being said, is there anyone in the audience here this evening, or electronically from the petitioner, who would like to speak on this request? I haven't pulled up. Mr. Box, can we?
I'm here for questions, but I don't have.
There will be a time served for you in just a moment. We may have the petitioner online, which is off, we're checking on.
I am not seeing anyone online raising their hand. If you would like to raise your hand, click on the raise hand button, or with the star nine on your phone if you dialed in, if you wish to speak on this item.
And specifically, if you're a member of the representative for the petitioner on this item.
Oh, yes, sorry.
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand, but just to say that over again, if anyone from TRE or representing their group is here this evening, if you wish to speak and we pass on, please feel free to raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or raising your hand in the app if there's anything that you wish to say. I want to make sure we don't miss you if you're here as former participants. We don't have to wave or such. That being said, I will take it back to the board for any questions before we open it up in the public. Does the board have any questions from Mr. Box or Mr. Spatafor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Box, there's a beautiful single-family home that looks like it's to the adjacent left, separated by a wall. And I'm just curious, does that take into account as far as the 75-foot measurement, or is it just within the boundaries of the development?
They need all the setbacks from this round.
So it is at least 75 feet or greater for the proposed trailer, correct me, Mr. Spatafor? Thank you. No further questions. We're going to thank Mr. Spatafor and Mr. Oliver. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. To Mr. Box, is the parking area going to be hard surface or aggregate?
Hard surface. That's why they had to provide the grading and the paving plan prior to construction to the engineering department.
Is, is our, is that required?
Yes, it is.
It is now. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Box? Could it be Spata?
Yes, Mr. Box, I missed it, or may have missed it, but some of the comments that were made by our, by our analyst, the plan analyst, it says planning permission to approve landscaping and ground cover. Is that one of the things that will happen later?
You have the authority to approve any landscaping that they propose. At this time, they're not proposing any landscaping other than siding in the front and the sides of the trailer.
Okay, and that constitutes sufficient landscaping. And then, they also said that their proposed sidewalk improvements by other departments must be met. Do we know that all the other departments have?
Yeah, that they are ADA compliant, yep.
Okay, and the setback you said was at least 20, but it just needs to be dimensioned.
That's right.
I only have one other, and that is, is there any requirement for a light? There is no lighting, separate lighting pole, but would there need to be lighting from the trailer onto the parking area or for security purposes? So that if anything's reported or whatever, and officers go in to look around, at least it's illuminated so they could see if somebody's trying to-
I don't believe there's any requirements for that.
No requirement.
And they're not proposing any of it.
No, they aren't. And I wondered if the light off the trailer would be required, or at least some light would be required. But if it is not, then, since I don't know, police department looks at these or not, or if there's any requirement.
They do not.
Okay.
At least not.
All right.
I have one question. I'll go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
No, that's all I have.
I have a question. Did they have to alter their site plan to add the trailer to it, or was this something that was just done?
Yes, this is, this is a change to their site plan, so when the temporary trailer goes away, they'll be back in with the plan showing units one, two, and three back as it was before.
So they had to come in and show the changes to you, come back to us, they had the trailer, and then want to come back again to go back. Is there a way we can do this administratively, or?
We could change our ordinance to this administrative. This is the first time that this has happened in the year that I've been here. I was a little surprised that there wasn't an administrative way to do this at this time. You know, you guys have already approved the site plan with units one, two, and three. Most developments, you see models being built, so they don't go through this process. But occasionally, they do, both the trailer, the sales trailer, and I do agree that I think this is something that we could modify our language a little bit, make this an administrative approval.
Because I think the way the housing market is right now, before someone can get a model built, if they're to put these trailers up, because houses are going faster. Houses in South Carolina, it's my son, and they have 15 people putting money down with no models.
Yeah.
But I think this is a benefit to the builder.
I think that's precisely what's happening here. They can't build the model fast enough, so they want to get a sales trailer out.
Right. So there won't be any stuck homes, so there'll be homes that they're building?
I think they do intend to build some model homes in the future, but they want this out there for them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From Shudo, one question from Box to follow up on that briefly. Are we, and I should know this from hearing this, are we putting a timing on the site plan, or we're changing the site plan until such time as they request for it to change?
Until such time as they request.
Does it make any sense for us to put a sunset on this? Obviously, we don't really want a trailer on there for the next 10 years.
It's a six-month.
I would say six months.
It's a six-month. In fact, yes, that's correct.
It's a six-month term. It's identified right here.
Must be removed.
Okay. In that case, just a thought, to Mr. Shudo's point, that maybe if it was granted administratively, it would be, it would be six months. And if they wanted a recurring time period over X amount of time, then maybe it would become a planning commission, or something more on a temporary basis would be more administrative action. That would just be my thought. That being said, is there any other questions from Mr. Box on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to take it out to the public. We have a member of the public in the audience with us this evening. We may also have members of the public on Zoom. I'm going to go with in-person first, and then we're going to move to, on the Zoom meeting. And just to verify, because I have it up on here, are we having people sit at the center table?
They're coming up to this table here.
They're standing.
They're standing here. Okay. Well, very good. I think, sir, you're the only member of the public, so if you'd like to come up and speak on this item,
you don't have to if you don't want to.
One question.
Are you here representing the petitioner?
Yes.
Ah, explains things. Actually, if you could up, sir, come up, sir, and state your name and address for the record, that would be, that'd be good to make sure we have it in the record.
My name is Portavo Pelso, TRE Development.
Very well. Thank you. My apologies. I meant to have you up here earlier, and I didn't follow, because you said something to me. To the board, is there anyone on the board who has any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, this one. You heard all we said.
They tried to.
Yeah, probably if any concerns was how long that trailer will be here. And I know it's six months. You've already stated that. But can you just tell us, just an update on where you're at, and when do you think you'll have your first model?
We've got our punch those from water and sewer to complete the site development, and I know we're working through that, but in the meantime, we want to use the sales trailer to get some pre-sales and things since we're so close on the development. We want to make sure we take part of the spring push here.
So, do you think you'll have a model up in six months? That's, I mean, I'm just kind of looking at math now, and the way homes are being built and-
Well, we're hopeful.
Good. Okay.
We'd love to build them faster, actually.
Yeah, and I understand, and I understand what's going on out there with, you know, the shortage of supplies and labor and on and on and on.
Sure.
So, okay.
I did have one question or just one comment to you while you're up here. I had a call on this from a resident today who I don't think made it, and she just indicated they had some concerns with landscaping on the site. There's some weeds that are growing up. Obviously, that's not what you're here for tonight, but just if you can check along the back, I think along the back property, particularly, there was some concerns about dumping, some of the, maybe the geo fencing being pulled down, and a lot of landscapes to be cut down. And obviously, you're supposed to work on the site, but just keep it in mind, I would, there are some concerns with that.
I haven't heard from anybody, but I'll make it possible to look at it.
If you could, I would appreciate it. And with that being said, I'm going to take it out to the public. You're welcome to stand there. You're welcome to sit down. I don't want to make you stand there if we don't have anything for you. But if we have any questions, we'll probably back. Appreciate your time. With that said, I'm going to go out to the public. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this, they're going to be on Zoom, so please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine if you're on a phone, or by hitting the hand button on the app so that we know to unmute you and let you speak. Mr. Box, we actually do have a phone here. I think you're going to have to unmute them.
It's like a Galaxy tab.
Yeah, we've got a Galaxy tab who wishes to speak. I think you have to unmute yourself. We unmuted on our end, but you're going to have to unmute, you're going to have to unmute your phone so you can speak. And when you do so, if you can give your name and address for the record. You're going to have to unmute yourself, though. So the Galaxy tab who wishes to speak, we've unmuted you on our end, but you're going to have to unmute it from your phone. You'd like to speak to me. I don't see anyone else at this time in that user. Oh, there we go. Can you hear us? Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address for the record, sir? Do you have any comments you might have? And please keep in mind, we have a four-minute time.
Robert Kalija, 49537 Split Rock Road. In the home.
Could you repeat that again, sir? We had a connection breakup on our end.
I'm at 49537 Split Rock Road.
And what was your full name again? My apologies, our connection broke when you said something.
Robert Kalija.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Go ahead with your comments. Go ahead with any comments you might have, sir.
No, I don't have any. I'm waiting for the seven o'clock meeting.
Uh, this, this is the seven o'clock meeting. What item did you wish to speak on?
I'm just here just, just to observe. It's for the Monarch Meeting.
Okay.
Believe us, the next item. So, yeah, if you just hang tight with us for a minute, we'll let you speak. Are you a member of the public or are you a petitioner?
No, I live in, in the subdivision.
Okay, very good. When we get to that item, we'll give you another chance to speak, and you'll be able to speak on that. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If you do, please raise your hand digitally by hitting star nine or hitting the phone or hitting the hand button on the app. And seeing none, and without objection, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the board. Is there any comments, questions, or motions on this item? And please keep in mind, if you make a motion, this is for approval, not recommendation, and that Mr. Box has asked if we vote to approve to make contingents on the items that you mentioned in this petition discussion.
If there's no further discussions, Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the site plan subject to the revisions that Mr. Box indicated in his presentation for Wellington Estates Site condo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spatafor, support by Mr. Provenzano. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Tuckfield, I believe you needed a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
I, if you would like us to do it the way I have, the way I've typically done it when I'm the chair, is I just say a close without further objection, which I did do, I'm fine taking a motion if you, before I do that.
It's provided for in the, in the bylaws, I believe, so.
And again, if you'd like it to, I think it's in the new bylaws, it's not in the old. I'm fine if you'd like to. So if we could-
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support. Motion by Mr. Shudo, support by Mr. Provenzano. All those in favor, to close the public portion for that item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and the public portion is closed. The time is 6:51. Thank you, Mr. Bentley, and thank you. All right, moving on to item 6B. This is the final plan for Monarch Estates, permanent parcel 0820300016, BCLR22 LLC is the petitioner. And Mr. Box, could you take us through the review of this, please?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen again. I think you all see that now. So, as you said, Monarch Estates, this is north of 22 mile, a little bit east of what will be in future Garfield. This is a single-family development that has four phases, phases one and two have already been, this is phase three of that development. I'm going to take you through a few items that we reviewed. There's a few items that relate to landscaping and signage that there were still some outstanding questions on that we now have answers for, so I'm going to take you through some of that. The planting and staking details, that information has been added. They needed to add a note about the entire common area. That note has also been included. And there was a client list and drawing discrepancy that's been updated to accurately correspond to the client lists. The sign is located as required within the landscaping area, and it is, it meets the requirements for size and in terms of height and square feet. And the setback is acceptable, meeting all of the requirements, and it must be externally lit, and that has been confirmed at this time. So at this time, the planning staff is recommending final approval for Monarch Estates Phase Three, as all the outstanding information has now been provided to us. And I did want to point out, I received a call from a resident today with concerns, wondering why there were condominiums going in next door. This is a site condo. These are single-family homes. Maybe just a misunderstanding of the terminology. These, these homes will essentially be the same as what was in Monarch Phases One and Two, it's a site condo, not a multifamily condominium building. These are single-family homes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. And yes, that's certainly something we do hear on occasion, and we understand the concern of that. But yes, site condominium, in this case, the homes will look virtually indistinguishable from neighboring, neighboring buildings. Is there any questions for Mr. Box from the board?
I have one.
Mr. Bentley? And this is a housekeeping item, parcel number. Our, our agenda has 08230016. All the documentation in our packet has 017, including the, including the application. Do you know which it is, Mr. Box?
Off the top of my head, I do not, but I'm assuming that the application has the correct numbers, and I guess is the item, the parcel number on the agenda may be off by one.
Just for the record, wanted to make sure we got the right parcel.
One second, I'll try to pull that up and confirm.
And the other question while you're doing that is just a confirmation, this is Phase Three, is it wrong, correct?
Yes.
Yes, Phase Three. My answer.
Mr. Izzy, just so you know, I believe you're unmuted at the moment, so I don't know if you're speaking, but just a heads up that we can hear you. We want to make sure you're aware of that.
It is 0820300017.
17, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Box, we know which one was advertised.
I can pull that up as well.
That's something we want to make sure that, obviously, if we advertised the right one, if we didn't, that could be-
This might take a minute, so I want to continue with discussion.
The- Just as long as legal's okay, if we continue, and if we have the wrong, if we had the wrong parcel ID on the advertising, are we okay continuing, discuss it if we advertise the wrong parcel ID?
We're okay discussing, but we may have to come back, right?
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
One other question I had on the review comments, final plan review comments for Monarch Estates by Melissa Calmasi in paragraph two. There's something missing. I just didn't know what it was right at the end. That last sentence does not appear to be. I'm not sure if it's missing, has been met or hasn't been met. Not really sure. It doesn't clarify. The signage information has been updated. Sign is appropriately located within a dedicated landscape easement. Drawings confirm that all applicable zoning standards, including but not limited to those for height, square footage, lighting, and setbacks, but then it doesn't say.
Yeah, I think you're getting at that they have been met.
They have been met. Okay, just for clarification and record, have been met.
Very good. Thanks, Bentley. Is there any other questions on this? Obviously, Mr. Box is looking through some paperwork, so we may not be able to answer them, but do you have any other questions on this before I take the position?
On somewhat unrelated to it, but close by as far as the geography, I was just going to ask Mr. Box if he had an idea if he knew as far as timetable wins us. Garfield Road was going to be extended north of 22 mile or 23, I assume. If you had a timetable if you knew, or had for-
If everything goes to plan, I think they're hoping to get started on that this summer yet. I think they're still working on some right-of-way acquisition.
Thank you.
Mr. Box, I think you're still checking for the, for the-
So I do have the 300-foot mailers, and that has parcel number 016.
So the appropriate thing would be, should we let the petitioner speak because he's here, or should we?
I think you should table it and come back.
Okay, very good. Mr. Izzy, have you been following along with this? Are you hearing what we're talking through? You might, you probably are still muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself. And then, obviously, when you're unmuted, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. This is Mario Izzy. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, if you could, state your address as well, so we have it.
Sure. Mario Izzy, MJC Companies, also BCLR22 LLC, 46600 Romeo Plank, Suite Number Five, Macomb Township.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Izzy, I'm not sure if you can hear. We're not entirely sure how the audio is coming back and forth, but we appear to have a difference between parcel ID numbers on the lot and what we may have advertised. And I'm being advised we should table this item to make sure that the notifications are sent out correctly on this item. I want to make sure you're aware of that and give you a chance to acknowledge that, that you're aware we're doing.
First of all, I apologize for getting on the call late. We thought it was a seven o'clock meeting, but neither here nor there, so we caught the discussion about halfway through. The, the parcel ID that was advertised was the 014 or the 017?
16. I believe it was advertised as 016.
Is that something that we filled out incorrectly on the application?
We believe that it is not your error, from what we can tell at the moment, it looks like on all of our internal documentation, including your application, that it appears to be, it appears to be the right parcel ID number, or at the very least, not the same one that was advertised, so.
Yeah, it's off by one.
I believe, I believe it was supposed to be 1, 017, and maybe we should verify that with you, and we believe that it was 016 that was advertised.
Yes, sir, it is 017 is the correct parcel ID for Phase Number Three of Monarch.
Okay, and then, just to, to confirm with Mr. Box, so if we table that this evening for correct notification, we're looking at two weeks, we're looking at, what, what would the time be to?
We can get these mailers out when they can be on the next agenda.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Izzy, that would be two weeks from today, which would be the 18th of May, it would be tabled until that time to make sure that we have correct notification, and, and Mr. Box, I believe since this would be us tabling it, there's no fees associated with this, it's primarily a time delay, more than anything else.
Correct. If, if I may, Mr. Commissioner.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, thank you for the opportunity, we had already scheduled, we were trying to get a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks, we were, we had a grading crew that was, that was freeing up, week of the 17th, I know it's not your problem, but, we have seven, seven months to do 12 months' worth of work, is there any, anything I can do to try to, anything we can do to get started, possibly, we're, we're willing to pay the fees, pre-con, we, we won't start any pipe work, can we just start grading? Is that a possibility? I'm not sure if Mr. Van Tiflin is available, or Mr. Wangland is available?
I'll just, yes, Mr. Box, one thing before we get to that, Mr. Box, is if, if we, if the board wanted to, which the board may not want to, we'll deal with that as a separate issue, but if you did advertising, is it, would it be possible to do a special meeting prior to, prior to that time?
Yeah, we could do a special meeting next week.
Looking at the 17th, which would be the Monday, Mr. Izzy, I believe you said the 17th, is that the date that you, you gave?
Yes, sir, can you hear me okay again?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the 17th, that we were to do a special meeting next week as opposed to the following week, that, that might be something.
Yes.
Obviously, the board, we, I'll still bring it back to the board, but you're able to do that?
Yes, we can get the mailers out tomorrow.
Okay.
Then five days from then, we can, we can have.
So that would be five days after tomorrow, so that'll be six, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, so thirteen?
Day of the week is that.
That'll be Thursday.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Izzy, I'm, I'm gonna bring this to the board, but if we were able to bring this up on the 13th of May, obviously, I would not promise a, a result on the approval, but if we brought it up by then, would that be sufficient time for you to proceed?
Yeah, that would be more than, more than helpful, I appreciate it, and I, I apologize for the extra hassle you have to go through for this, I feel bad, but, you know.
No, and it's understood, just so we're clear, I have not brought this to the board, I'm trying to verify that we have a date, I'm gonna bring it to the board, we have to, we have to, I think, make sure that everybody's available and that everybody's okay, so, sit tight for a minute, I'm, I can't, not promising this will happen, but particularly when we have an issue, wanna make sure we work through it, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board and, and with Mr. Bentley, yes.
Mr. Chair, can we approve contingent upon the re-advertising and, and no?
I don't believe, I don't believe, but I don't.
I don't believe so, you have to have the, the public, the public has to have proper notice, and they have to be, they have to have the opportunity to be present, be heard.
So if, if it was approved contingent upon the approval by the public after such time as it's been, as, as it has been re-advertized, and there were no comments, we go ahead, that would be almost instantaneous, if at that meeting on the 13th, or whatever it happens to be, having no issues, it would be done.
I don't think, I don't think. You're right, you can't, you can't predict what's gonna happen in the future, you have to give the public the opportunity to be, be here and be heard.
Very good, Mr. Chair, well, we have to go through the same discussion again, man? I mean, with the public here, we're gonna have to inform them of everything, and.
I believe that is accurate, now.
So we, 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 we continue to discuss it, we're gonna have to do it again.
Yes, correct.
Which, which is, which is why I, I would not necessarily have Mr. Izzy give his presentation, and that's why I asked.
Oh, right, okay.
We should continue.
Correct.
Okay, with, with that, I'll bring it to the board, well, actually, I should check Mr. Box, so if we were to do this, the mechanics of it is we, we call a special meeting, the chair is not here this evening, but I believe two members of the planning commission can call a special meeting, they agree, so I, I think procedurally, the, the motion would be whether or not we should table this to a special meeting dated.
4/13.
4/13, if, if the board was desirous to do that, and the last thing I would, I would just confirm so that we're aware of this, and Mr. Izzy's aware of this, would we expect, I believe there's typically a special meeting cost, would we expect Mr. Izzy to pay that, or would that be something that we would be waiting for?
This was not his error.
And, I'm trying, I don't wanna ground it out, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page on, on, okay. That being said, no problem, Mr. Izzy, go ahead, Mr. Spatafora.
Yes, Mr. Chair, point of order, because of the advertising requirements, then this would be rescheduled, and if we're proper notice, we'll schedule a public hearing, is that correct? This is why we could not do maybe a consent or voice vote, anything, we have to be present because the public has the right comment on the, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, well, then, what I.
Let's be the old.
Go, go ahead, your program.
So, Mr. Chair, would this be like the only thing on the agenda, this is the only thing that's gonna happen, I mean.
At this point, I would expect it, because unless we had something that we specifically advertised by tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to get it on there, and we already have agenda items for the following two days.
So will we be here, or can we do it through Zoom, or what?
We would have to have a forum here, which I believe means that four of us would, at least four of us would have to be able to be here, I know my schedule, and, and that's why we're gonna bring it to a vote, I know my schedule, I, I can make it here, and I do want to make it here at that time, make sure we keep everything moving, which, what I think we should do is I'm gonna bring it to the board for a motion, we can have discussion on the motion, and then we can vote whether or not that's what we want to do, so.
Are you one of the members that are requesting a special meeting, because if you are, I'll be to second, if we need it.
I think what would be appropriate thing would be the person making the motion, and the person seconding the motion, and the people who would be requesting a special meeting, I can make a motion as chair, but I probably will withhold doing so unless there's no one else willing to make a motion.
Do we need to request a special meeting and then vote on it?
You, you have a motion for the special meeting.
Right.
Then you have to have a discussion on it, and then you vote.
Would, would you, and I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure we're doing this all right, because usually nobody's thinking of the plot, would you prefer a motion to schedule a special meeting and then to table this item to that special meeting?
Yes.
And would the table be the correct terminology, or would it be?
Yes.
Okay, very good, that being said, I'll bring it back and open the floor for a motion to propose a special meeting on 5/13, are there any motions to that effect?
I made their motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Question on the motion.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Provenzano, discussion going to Mr. Spatafora.
Would this then, Mr. Box, be just a single item special scheduled, planning commission meeting?
Correct, because anything else that would be on that agenda would have had to have been advertised for that date, up until right now, we wouldn't have known that that date was gonna be a meeting, so, anything that's already been advertised for the following week would still remain on, on the, the following.
Okay, thank you, a motion's been made and set.
Second. Mr. Tuckfield, roll call vote on this motion.
Yeah, Mr. Shudo, I appreciate that, and I would also say, in, in discussion generally, before we get into the motion, is there anyone who does not believe they would be able to make it at that time, because you might be willing to have a meeting, but you might not be able to make it, is anybody able to make that date?
No, I think so.
And, and to clarify, it would be at 6:30 to keep with our schedule. Okay, very good, then we're gonna call a roll on this, roll, follow this motion, the motion was, was by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Provenzano, Bentley, go ahead with the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
And, Mr. Bentley.
And you were yes.
And I am a yes.
You're good.
But you checked that.
Very good. All right, Mr. Izzy, I, I hope you followed all that, but we just made a motion to create a special meeting on 5/13, and then we're going to, gonna entertain a motion to table this item until such time, obviously, Mr. Box will be in, in communication with you, and, and he mentioned that this is a cost the township will bear, as from what we can tell, it is not your responsibility, it's ours, so we'll, we'll handle that on our, so, just as long as, you know, we did pass the motion to make a special meeting, and then we'll, we'll table it at this time.
Well, I, I truly appreciate your cooperation, and I, I apologize for, for the burden to all of you, I'm sorry you have to go through the extra meeting, but I really do appreciate you working with us, as you always do, and giving us a chance to get started on the project, so thank you to all of you, appreciate your, your trust and your faith in us, thank you.
No problem, that, that accidents happen and problems happen with us, with everyone, and I think the want from everybody is just to make sure we keep things moving as best we can, so.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I, I make mistakes too, and your community always gives me a chance to make them better, so I appreciate the, the trust, thank you.
No problem, thank you. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to table item six B until the special meeting on May 13th, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Shudo, and we'll do a roll call vote on this one as well, Mr. Bentley, if you can please roll the roll.
Yes, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
And Mr. Spatafora?
Yes. All right, that item is both postponed to 5/13 and 6:30, and Mr. Izzy, just a brief note, that I can certainly understand getting here from seven o'clock, I'm on the board, and the first meeting we transferred it to 5:30, I, I walked in, or 6:30, I walked in at 6:25, thinking I had 35 minutes, so, I know how that goes, and, thanks for, thanks for bearing with us, glad you're here on time for right.
Yes, sir, thanks to all of you, and, and appreciate your understanding, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks everyone for rolling through that, and.
Rolling was a good word.
Yes, and hopefully that works out okay, Mr. Box, and, and let's go over to the work, go over to the work. All right, that's gonna move us on to item seven, which is old business, another old business, we have bylaws, Mr. Box, I don't know if you wanna go through this, or, or are you presenting tonight, I want to go through, so I think you have the red lines from Mr. Aloya for the board.
Yeah, you have the, you have two versions, you have the clean version, which has all of the edits in it, and then the second version is the, the red line version, the version that shows what changes have been made since the last time you read through it, there's only a handful, so I don't know, I don't know if you can go through them one by one, I, I guess this is more of a thing for Mr. Orlando here.
Yeah, the only thing I would point out to the commissioners is, when we had the discussion on the bylaws at the April 20th meeting, Mr. Bentley had three items that he raised, and Mr. Tuckfield had three items that he raised, I took those back to Mr. Aloya, the two of us went through them, we checked them against the statutes again, and we have done our best to incorporate the revisions into the bylaws that were requested, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to address them.
I have a couple, but I'll open it up, the board, I think Mr. Spatafora has something.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, regarding Article Roman Uplift, Section, Episode Frank, in Paragraph Seven, Mr. Tuckfield brought out an interesting point, and he earlier attempted to just close a public hearing if there were no objections without a motion, I know we had discussion at the last meeting with respect to, you know, what was put in there, and per the previous bylaws, that a motion was required to close a public hearing, I guess to Mr. Orlando, if you know offhand, or if, you know, there was discussion since we opened a public hearing without a motion under a bylaws procedure, would we be able to at least consider doing what Mr. Tuckfield earlier did, if there were no objections, without a motion as well, and I bring this up just to be consistent, I've been on previous boards where public hearings were opened and closed by motions, and to open one without a motion and but to close it with a motion, to me, it's just a little inconsistent, but, it's not a major deal, but, just for the interests of, you know, time, moving, meeting along, and just, you know, perhaps proper procedure and protocol within the discretion of the chair, if that could be done without a motion.
It, it could be, but we wanna be consistent in the bylaws, so that it was, is handled the same way each time.
Right. And I'm, either way, obviously, I don't chair the planning commissioner out, and I think Mr. already tends to, to do it with a motion, so.
So consistent as far as from planning commission meeting, the planning commission meeting, we have for at least a number of years now here in McComb Township, we've opened a public hearing by the chair's order call, but we do close a public hearing with a motion, and that's how we wanna continue doing it, to be consistent, I'm understanding it right?
No, what I'm saying is, if, if the commission would like to do it that way, we can have the bylaws provide for that, I think we just wanna make sure that the bylaws provide for whatever procedure the, the, the members of the commission want to follow, so if, if you want to have the chair open and close the public hearing, then we could do that, or we could continue to do it, it, the way that you have been, we just amended the bylaws to provide for the chair calling for a motion to close the, the public hearing, because that's what, my understanding is, is that that's what the commission had been doing.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Bentley?
I, what I had experienced since I've been here is, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, and I wanted some consistency, because there was always questions, when do we do it, when don't we, and I, I do feel though, that in asking for a motion, it, it gives a chance for everybody to realize, okay, this is over, you know, the public hearing is closed, and.
And, and Mr. Bentley, I would hear your point, I think to Mr. Spatafora's point, it would seem that if we're closing it with a motion, we should probably open it with a motion, so if we're deciding to do it with a motion, maybe we should do it on both ends as opposed to not on one end, but on the other, I think that's what your general.
Again, I, I go with experiences of doing business and being part of other commissions, that they're usually consistent, at a public hearing, if open by a motion, it's closed by a motion, or within the discretion of the chair in different communities, a public hearing is open and closed by the chair without a motion, that's all I'm saying, maybe it's a little complicated way of saying it, but, you know, I was just trying to look for some consistency, and it seems inconsistent to me, perhaps not a big deal, but, you know, when the chair opens a public hearing, but you require a motion to close it, it's like, I think, you know, you would do it both one way, or do it both the other way, but not have one, and the other being a little bit, that's all.
You know, if, if I can, for discussion purposes, it seems like signaling the beginning to the public, they know they're up, and then if it's consistent to shut it down with a motion, I mean, I don't see how it hurts to do that, but I think the signaling of doing it seems like it would be appropriate, especially because it's a public thing, that they know they're up, and now they know they're down.
And when you say signaling, you're referring to making a motion.
Yeah, so, see, they, they understand, okay, you guys, it's just a public part now, somebody says it, you know, I think it's better if we do a motion, it kinda takes a little bit of time, everybody gets ready, and they're ready to go, I just.
I will.
I'm looking, I'm looking for some kind of reason to.
Well, I will say, Mr. Provenzano, that going back to my previous history, right here at McComb Township, I was privileged to chair of the board meetings, the McComb Township Board, a, a number of years ago, and if memory serves me correctly, we opened and closed public hearings with a motion, that's all I'm saying, so somewhere along the way in the last several years, maybe that's changed, not 100% sure how the planning commission did it back then, I thought it was, again, motion to open and motion to close, I apologize if I'm making this more of a big deal than it is, but we're looking just for. Uh, I apologize if I'm making this more of a big deal than it is, but we're looking just for consistency and uniformity. Maybe within the spirits of, of Robert's rule, which is obviously the long standard authority, how to run, we, it's my opinion, just, you know, neither, and I like what you said, Mr. Provozano, to signal to the public, usually by a motion that now the public hearing portion is open. And with a vote, now it is closed. Again, it, it, we haven't run into a, a problem or difficulty so far, but again, just to be consistent and move it along. So everyone knows for the record.
Mr. Orlando, I did have one other thing I'm noticing as I'm reading this. So item, uh, F five is chair opens public hearing. Then item F six is chair closes public hearing. Then F seven is chair asks for discussion. And then it mentions that the motion from the commission to close the public hearing. So maybe that portion should be on six as opposed to seven. Uh, if I'm reading that correct.
Six and seven, I believe should be spot.
And, and then maybe an eight after discussion, that would be a motion on the item. So, um, and I apologize for not having that noticed that last week. Um, so general consensus among the board, maybe we should bring this up as, as a, as, uh, something more formal. Does anybody, does anyone object to, to writing into the bylaws that there should be a motion to open and a motion to close the public portion?
I agree with members Spataforo, we have to be consistent. I think if we open meeting, we should start with a motion and we should close with a motion too.
I think, unless there is no objection, I think that's what the, I think that's what the consensus is. Sorry for coming back on that a couple of times.
No problem. I mean, like he says, if we're going to do it, let's do it one way and let's have it in the bylaws and let's just make sure everyone that goes following on a planning commission knows how to open and close the public hearing. And it's easy for someone to step in and, and fill a position if the chairman's not here, if they never chaired a meeting before, they look through here and see how the rule of order is and, and, and do it that way. So I think we should open and close with motions. That's my opinion.
I'm, I'm good with that. Um, any other comments on bylaws? I'm, I'm sure Mr. Bentley has a few.
Has.
Uh, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Okay, uh, I'll start with, uh, article, uh, three, uh, article three, commission duties, what page? It would be page, uh,
Page one or thirty-seven, depending on which, I think it's thirty-seven.
Page one, page one. And, uh, C indicates prepare an annual report, which is a, a commission duty. Um, and, uh, I just like clarification on who prepares that annual report. When you go down to, uh, item, uh, where it describes the officers and commissioners, there is the duties of the secretary under article five. Item E, uh, duties of secretaries. Uh, and it indicates under two, attendance designated township staff is, uh, responsible for maintaining an attendance record for each commissioner and report those records annually to the commission for inclusion in the annual report, uh, to the township board. Uh, under correspondence, number one, the township staff is responsible for issuing formal written correspondence, which it does, to groups of people as directed by the commission. All communications, petitions, reports or other written material received by staff must be brought to the attention of commission. Uh, and they've been doing that. The question is, who is preparing that annual report? Is it the staff, the township staff? Uh, and maybe it's with the secretary, um, or is it, is it the secretary? I think to say.
It's, it's universal.
And, uh, and, uh, and then, you know, just put together by the township staff and, uh, and issue. So that is my, uh, that is my question. I don't know what's been done in, in previous years, uh, but I know, uh, I have not been a part.
Mr. Stataforo, you had a comment on that?
Uh, again, I want to draw from my past experience with another municipal and another board, when an annual report is brought forward, uh, it has been usually prepared by, uh, uh, the township planner or the township planning director and uh, which could include their staff, a team to present a written report summarizing, you know, the actions of, of the past year that, and it's brought before the planning commission to review, uh, and re, report and, and to comment on.
If I could just add, I,
Go ahead, Mr. Box.
I think it makes more, the most sense that our staff does this. I mean, by all means, if, if you guys as a planning commission want to do this, feel free, but that's, I, I'm okay with that too, but I think it makes the most sense that our staff puts this annual report. I'm not sure how it's been done in the past, but, uh, it, it makes the most sense to me that you would do that.
And, and to that point, Mr. Box, I agree. The only concern I would have is one of the reasons Mr. Bentley is not familiar with this is because we've not had an annual report at least given to us at the time that I've been here. Um, and so I think that's one of the concerns. I know for me, I've planned on doing an annual report for ZDA for literally three years. And one of the reasons I'd rather have to do it is I meant to and I haven't been able to. So as long as we're doing it, I, I, I would assume Mr. Bentley would agree that planning staff would be a logical and the ideal solution there.
And I don't know legally if, as Mr. Spataforo was indicating, whether or not since it's our annual report, if, if we need the, to review it and, uh, and approve it, uh, before it gets, uh, published, I guess, or, uh, or given to the board.
I'd have to check the statute, but I believe that the, the commission does have to approve the annual report.
Okay. There, and, and if, if that's the case, there is nothing in here that basically identifies a procedure or, uh, you know, uh, the fact that you would have to finally approve it or have input or have.
If I can remember at all.
Yeah.
I hope they'll put it.
I mean, I, I, I need to, I need to, uh, add work to anyone or to our agenda, but, uh, if, if we're required to have an annual report, it has to come from, or it's for the commission, uh, that we should be reviewing it, uh, just as we're reviewing the bylaws.
I wonder if it would make sense, Mr. Bentley, specifically with this portion, because you might, there might be other sub portions we want to include. For example, what, what should be included in the report? Maybe it might be appropriate to leave this as a modification that is not covered by this iteration, but we, we take up prior to, say, the end of the third quarter so that Mr. Box has the ability to have it finalized.
It does indicate.
We don't have to ask them.
Apparently it does indicate in article three, item C, uh, for the township board as required by MCL one twenty-eight point thirty-eight point nine.
It, it is.
And it must include the commission's attendance, operations, status of petitions before them over the course of the prior year. I don't know what format or anything else. Josh, have you done this in the past?
Uh, I have not, but I, I have seen them done in other communities, so.
So this is going to be a learning curve for all of us right now. I'm sure we can come up with format.
Yeah.
That we'll get it set up and.
Shouldn't be too difficult.
Or can we strike this?
I don't think that's true. It's, it's, it's required from the commission.
It's our bylaws.
You just, you just read the statute.
We're still on the statute here.
Just read the statute.
I, I'm just kidding.
The masks don't lend itself to, to good sarcasm. Don't have no facial juice. Any other, any other questions, Mr. Bentley?
Let me, let me check. I did highlight, uh, apologize. Um, okay. Uh, yes. I think going back to, well, maybe you have that question on the rules of order. Two problems. Uh, I have no further questions, uh, other than, other than absences, um, and unexcused absences or sick absences. Uh, excused or unexcused. I didn't know whether there was any leeway we have there or not. And then the very final comment I have is, and I suspect this will change, but, uh, the very last statement before the signatures, these bylaws were duly adopted by a two-thirds vote of the Calhoun Township Planning Commission during its regular even health on. And that what I s, I would assume should be, uh, whatever that date is. Not left with it. That's all I have.
All right. Uh, anyone else? Questions on bylaws? Mr. Oliver, I think you may add something on.
Uh, I wa, I wanted to talk about the, uh, being absent. So we're at six right now? That's the way I read this.
I think it's two consecutive or six in total over a twelve month period.
Yeah, excuse, right.
Right, either way, six.
I believe it. I believe, oh, or six absences excused or I say, so on two, it's unexcused and on the six, it's excused or.
So where does that, where does that put us when we have one of the members that maybe end up taking two off because whatever their schedule can't make it. Then, then somebody gets sick, so you could eat up six real fast. And we could end up losing a good member i- i- in a period of nine months.
Agreed.
You know, I, I, I'm a little bit, just a little bit sensitive of that.
Isn't that out to the supervisor's discretion?
No, it's in the bylaws. So that's.
I have to cut it, cut it clear. I, I believe if, if a board member is to be removed, they do have, and we started through this process with ZDA, uh, several years ago, it ends up being, uh, uh, a, a board vote by the board trustees where they have to find out. The only thing I would, uh, mention, Mr. Oliver and maybe Mr. Orlando, is I wonder if we should change the word from shall to may. So instead of saying in twelve month period, shall be considered nonfeasance of duty, uh, removal, maybe we say may to give the guidelines of what we think that might be, but may would allow, if, if, if no one had a problem with it.
Right.
But, but it's giving more of a guideline of what we're considering nonfeasance of duty by absence.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Chair, sorry. I, to piggyback on, uh, Mr. Oliver's point and to, to your point, I like that idea of may because if, if a member, uh, had, uh, perhaps an unforeseen accident where they were hospitalized, it was a serious accident, they, that they would be on, uh, leave for quite a while. Uh, as Charlie was saying, you can eat up those absences right away to really, no fault of their own perhaps. I mean, if it was a serious thing, they wanted to stay on the planning commission, especially if it was a good member. So i- if you're going to chew up, let's say, perhaps at least two, maybe three meetings there and if something up comes and some foreseen, uh, or unforeseen absence comes along the way in the course of the twelve month period, then yes, I think, uh, uh, the bylaw and a change in that language from shall to may would, uh, perhaps accomplish its purpose and would give, uh, you know, the commission or the chair, the authority of the, of the appropriate person, uh, the, at least the right authority which to either keep the member on or, or take off, or at least just consider the facts and circumstances of a particular situation. Because every situation is, is unique.
You know, if I may, because I have a situation, um, my son-in-law got moved to Georgia. Uh, he's in the Navy. My daughter will be going down there and my grandkids. And I actually have to shove her practice down, her law practice. It's becoming a kind of a burden and I had an idea and I was thinking about it, you know, talking with Mr. Vivian to you guys, that maybe, you know, if I couldn't do these things by Zoom, now I may have to retire from it because I don't want to be a burden to the board not being here, the commission not being here. That's not fair to you guys, you know, everybody. I'm not going to be, but you know, I mean, then I thought maybe if I, I know Frank wants us to be on, on here, cause he's got rules, he's the guy. So I thought I might have to talk to him about that. You know, or it might come to the point where, cause I'm going to be down there a little bit. Um, my, my son-in-law is going to be, uh, uh, you know, away from the family because when he gets there, he's got to go to Pensacola. He's got six weeks, he's got, or seven weeks, he's got to be there. You know, I, I, I'm probably going to be in Georgia a little bit. So if I'm not going to be able to do it in Zoom, I want to do this. I like doing this. I like being part of this. You know, it's my community, but you know, it may come to that point where, you know, this rule may, so I like the may.
So, and I, and I think to me, I don't think this, I, I don't know that we could actually override the board trustees rule. Mr. Orlando may know this better than I do. My understanding is the board trustees has to vote. I don't think our bylaws can govern the board. But I think they are valuable guidelines. If we have someone, so in my case that I experienced with, I went to the supervisor, I said, I have a board member who has not made meetings and I feel that they should be removed. At that point, the question was, what was the appropriate number of meetings after which person should be removed? We had no guidelines. And so I think giving, not forcing it to happen, but giving the board guidelines of what we think is a, as a standing thing, what, what can be done. It doesn't rule out health things or, or, or things of that nature, but it gives some instance where if the board feels or if the planning commission feels this or the board trustees feels this, we have some, something to say, this is generally what we think, nonfeasance.
So by putting that in, that will protect a board member against a situation of, of any of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just wondering if we change that period, may be considered nonfeasance of duty and cause for removal unless there are other legitimate, um,
Well, we, we do already have multiple times where we say reasonable time. And as I'm sure Mr. Orlando can, can test, anytime we put reasonable or things like that into legal document, it always becomes dicey. What is reasonable time? So we, 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 we couldn't put that in, but, but, uh, I don't know. I, I would, I would think that if we just leave it as may, it's, it's similar what we were talking about with the motion. We're telling people, this is what we think is nonfeasance. So if you're going past this, better have a good reason or else you're running the risk of, of the.
Sometimes shorter is better.
Any other comments?
Um, I, are we in concurrence with may?
Yes. Yeah. Well, what's going to happen is we're going to make the proposed revisions based on what the board members are saying tonight. And then this will come back as another old business agenda item in two weeks with the, the new rule or the new bylaws. And, and, uh, hopefully they'll be acceptable at that point.
And, and I think I speak for everyone. I don't think any of our comments are critical necessarily of your, of your writing skills or legal skill. I think it's more us just evolving as we're reading it and we get to understand. So hopefully that's not a problem. Well, any other, uh, any other questions or concerns? I have one thing that I just want to mention, um, and that is that I mentioned the Robert rules of order last time. I don't know that I have an opinion on whether we should operate by Robert's rules or less by Robert's rules, other than similar to what we were talking about. I think it'd be good to be consistent. And the only thing I wanted to confirm was that you and Mr. Aloya put that in because you felt that was the way we should go. And not because you made a change based on maybe we should make a change. I guess I just want to ask a question. Do you, do you, do Mr. Aloya feel we should move to more formal adoption of Robert's rules or are you guys neutral on that issue? Was it?
No, we're neutral on the issue. I mean, Robert's rules of order are, are generally accepted rules for governing meetings of, of this nature. And it, 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 it does have the provision where the chair has, uh, uh, the appropriate, um, ability to, to deviate.
Deviate, right. Right. Okay. All right. That was my only, that was my only question. That was everything I had. So unless there's for the discussion, I guess that's going to get brought back to us, uh, in two weeks and now this special meeting, is that correct?
Two weeks.
Okay. So this will be more or less a receiving, um, for receiving file type action. All right. Uh, with that being said, uh, we are, I believe, moving on to item eight, which is public comments on non-agenda items. Um, probably have lost most of our public account. Uh, we probably have lost most of our public, uh, public participants, considering that long, interesting conversation. Uh, but I'm gonna open it up to the public. If anyone from the public wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, please indicate you wish to do so by hitting star nine on your phone or the NF on your app, and we will give you a chance to speak if you choose to do so. I believe we have one member of the public on the line right now, and if that person wishes to comment, I know they know how to do it, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give them about fifteen seconds here and, uh, they don't wish to comment, we'll move on. Doesn't look like they wished to comment, so we have no one in person, so we're going to move on to item nine, which is commissioners' comments. Are there any commissioners who wish to comment, see? Mr. Bradley, go ahead.
I just had one item, um, and it's, it seems to be fairly common, uh, the reproduction, uh, of the submittals, uh, PDFs, uh, that are part of our packet. I'm not sure how they're produced, uh, but I know for my old eyes, uh, when I, when I look at them, uh, uh, at a distance, they're, they're, they're fine, but I can't read them, so I pull them up and they're blurred because they, maybe they aren't digitally, uh, made to be PDFs. They are either photographed or some other way, uh, and so they become illegible. And I don't know what the requirements are for the, um, the petitioners to submit, uh, you know, in what format they submit, but that should probably be a requirement that it be legible at any scale and, uh, especially when they're blown up before it's put into our packets. Uh, and so I, I would request, at least on, on, uh, my part, that, uh, plans, especially when they're very detailed and that, uh, I just cannot read the, you know, the, I couldn't even see a sign. I couldn't even read anything on, uh, many of those plans.
Yeah, we, we compress the PDF so that they're at a size that we can email.
Right.
That's what's making it blurry like that. Uh, I can ignore that, and so any of the actual plan documents can get sent in addition to the packet. It's just when we get too many of those, then the email again will get too large and we'll have issues sending them, so...
Yeah, I don't think it can be sent by zip or, or what, uh, or maybe Dropbox?
Yeah, we could do, we could do a Dropbox. We do have that as an option.
But I know in the past, we, we've had, uh, very detailed plans. I was able to pull them up and the screen just takes a little bit and then it finally pops.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Very clear.
That was probably when they were being sent with a link.
Would be.
We could do that again.
Thank you for your...
Any comments this evening?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to publicly thank the family that donated the land off of Romeo and playing for a park. I mean, you can never have enough land for a park in our township, and I know Supervisor Viviano in the board are gonna make good use of that land, and it's deeply appreciated as a resident that we have people donating property, and I'm sure will develop it for the needs of our residents, and I'd like to thank, thank them personally.
Will you brought, Charlie? Excuse me?
Is that the one that you brought up?
Yeah, at the last meeting.
Yeah, great, great, uh, gift.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Terrific.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna move on to item ten, which is the home township board trustees liaison. Mr. Har, uh, Mr. Oliver, you have any thoughts this evening?
Uh, yes, uh, the park and rec announced that they're going to take the, uh, old bridge out of the Waldenbrook Park. It's, uh, I think it's twelve years old. It's, it's moving and shifting. And it, it's gonna be rebuilt. Sounds like it's gonna be a little higher. I think it's gonna be some handrails on it and, uh, they expect it to be done by, uh, August fifteenth, so...
Same name?
Excuse me?
Same name?
Yeah, no, no, they're, all they're doing is working on a bridge. Yeah, and, uh, so that's gonna be a big project.
I think, Mr. Oliver, you're referring to the board, the board...
The boardwalk, yeah.
It's, it's needed and it's, I, I live right by there and it's, it's up and out of the ground twelve, eighteen inches.
Yes, uh, probably four years ago, we had heavy flooding and it actually lifted, it moved. And then we spent a lot of money trying to get it back and they got it back. But, uh, I, I, I think, I think the, the updated bridge is gonna be a lot nicer, a lot better. So that's kind of probably the big thing. All right.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Oliver. Uh, take us on to item eleven, which is ZDA liaison, I'll report, which is me. Uh, I have nothing new to report since last meeting. Uh, we have one on Thursday. A pool variance, a little bit different than some of the other ones, but, uh, we're gonna see a lot of pools. That's all I've mentioned, which takes us on to item twelve, which is planning department items, Mr. Box. You have any thoughts this evening?
I do not.
All right, next slide to thirteen. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Support.
Uh, motion, Mr. Statafora, supported by Mr. Shudo. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, all those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
I said aye and I'm reading. I'm still, I'm still with an aye.
Okay, Mr. Oliver, then as of seven forty-six, the end, we are adjourned.